College system to order. I welcome all of those that are here at the meeting and those that are viewing us via Zoom. We continue to conduct our meetings under the emergency order issued by Governor Kay Ivey for state boards and commissions. This would be our 12th meeting in a distance setting via Zoom. And we appreciate everyone accommodating this. We thank everyone for viewing this and their interest in the workings of our system. A great deal of work has gone into all the items on the agenda for the meeting and for the work session. This chancellor and his staff have worked on many of these items and some things have been in the work for many, many works for many, many months. So we do appreciate your interest in this and the board is engaged and involved in everything. I would like to first welcome Dr. Yvette Richardson, who is the new executive member to our Board of Trustees. Dr. Richardson represents District Four on the State Board of Education and currently serves as the President Pro Tem of the State Board of Education. Welcome, Dr. Richardson.
Good morning. Thank you so much.
At this time, to begin our, our meeting in a very positive way, I recognize Pastor Joey Byrd of Victory Baptist Church of Millbrook, Alabama, to give us a word of inspiration and a prayer. Pastor Byrd.
Good morning. How is everyone this morning?
Great.
Good.
Good. Thank you for the privilege of being invited to be with you this morning. And I just want to start by saying that it is a, a blessing and an encouragement to know that there's still a group of people in our educational system in our state that still desire to have God's blessing on what they're doing and desire to make an influence for Him. So I count it a privilege to be even asked to be a part of this meeting today. And I hope that you have a, a great day and an effective meeting today. I do want to give you before I open in a word of prayer, just a passage of scripture that will be familiar to most of you, just three short verses that hopefully will be an encouragement to you today. Very familiar passage in Psalm one, the first three verses. The word of God says, blessed is the man that walketh not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor standeth in the way of sinners, nor sitteth in the seat of the scornful. But his delight is in the law of the Lord, and in his law does he meditate day and night. And he shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water that bringeth forth his fruit in his season. His leaf also shall not wither, and whatsoever he doeth shall prosper. And really, I, by invitation, that's what I'm trying to do today is asking God to bless you and bless our community college system. And the scripture gives us, gives us the, the equation, if you will, to be blessed by God. It starts off by saying blessed is the man. First of all, if you break down those three verses, I'd call the first verse separation. He says blessed is the man that walketh not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor standeth in the way of sinners, nor sitteth in the seat of the scornful. So the importance of, of, uh, as Christians to separate ourselves from the ungodly, from the scornful. And then number, verse number two, but his delight is in the law of the Lord. And in his law does he meditate day and night. And I would call that searching. And just to be blessed by God, number one, to separate ourselves, number two, to search his scripture. And they should be our delight. And we should meditate in them day and night. And, um, and then lastly, as a result of those in verse number three, and he shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water that bringeth forth his fruit and his season. And that's the blessing then that God gives to us. And the fact in verse number three there that, that we become settled on some things, some things that really matter. And, um, and that's my prayer for all of us, but certainly for you as you educate people all across our state. And that God would bless you in your endeavors. And that you would, you would allow and yield yourself to Him in these things and allow Him to accomplish these things. And that together we might yield fruit for Him. So I pray for God's blessing on you and on your homes and families and on what you're trying to do in our state. And let's open in a word of prayer today. Lord, we've come to you this morning and Lord, again, I just want to thank you for, first of all, who you are. Lord, this is the day that you've made and we're going to rejoice and be glad in it. With some beautiful weather in our state today and Lord, we thank you for that. And Lord, we know that you are the one that's responsible for that. Lord, you've woken us up, you've allow, you allow us to breathe your air. And Lord, you've given us another opportunity today to serve you, to influence those that you allow to come across our path today for you. And Lord, I pray that you would help us to take advantage of that opportunity today. Lord, I thank you for the ACCS and Lord, for these board members and Lord, that they are. Lord, so I'm told, people of faith, people that desire your blessing on their lives. And I, Lord, pray that we would follow the admonition of your word and Lord, that each one of us as, as individuals, would, we would separate ourselves, uh, Lord, from the things that go contrary to your word and contrary to your will. And Lord, that your scripture would certainly be our delight, we would search them daily. And Lord, that you would take that and you would use it to ground us and to settle us. And Lord, then to bear fruit in our lives for your glory. Lord, I pray that you would bless this meeting today. And Dr. Thompson already mentions all the work that's gone into the preparation. I pray that you would bless those that have accomplished that work. And Lord, the vision and the things that they're trying to accomplish. Uh, Lord, may you put your hand to those things. Lord, may you bless each person here, each family, Lord, that's represented here. Just wrap your arms around them and gird them up. And Lord, take us all as people of faith and believers in Christ and use us for your glory. We thank you for the pardon of sin that comes from the Lord Jesus Christ, what He did for us on the cross of Calvary. May we live with that in mind as we go throughout this very day. And we'll be careful to give you glory for any fruit, uh, that is brought forth in anything that you do in us and through us, in your name I pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor Byrd. Y'all, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with this for the objective of justice.
Ms. Hibble, will you please call the row?
Ms. Al Thompson.
Present.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Present.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Present.
Ms. Susan Boyd.
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Present.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Present.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Present.
Blake McInnes.
Present.
Dr. Yvette Richardson.
Present.
Governor Kay Ivey.
Mr. Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you. Item four on the agenda is approval of today's meeting agenda. Board members have received this in, well, in advance. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Milton. Motion by Mr. Davis to approve the agendas or second. Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a vote. We will do a voice vote on this roll call vote, please. I'm sorry. Yes?
Yes.
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 Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McInnes.
Yes.
Dr. Yvette Richardson.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, the agenda's approved. Item five is the approval of the minutes of the February 10th, 2021 meeting. Is this time, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Smith to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Second by Mr. McInnes. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call the question and we'll move to a roll call vote of the minutes of the February 10th, 2021 meeting. And, and just remember, you don't need to call, uh, ex officio.
Ms. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Matthew Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McInnes.
Yes.
Minutes are approved. Move to item six, public comment. Is anyone signed up for public comment? Section seven, academic and student affairs, adult education, facilities, fiscal information technology, and workforce development. Seven, A1 is building death, building demolition at Gaston State Community College. This was on last month's work session. I think this has been thoroughly reviewed by the board. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Seeing them, we'll move to a roll call vote on the get building demolition at Gaston State Community College.
Ms. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yeah.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Yes.
Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McInnes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, A2 is replacement of HVAC system at Naylor Hall at Gaston State Community College. Once again, this was on last month's work session. Is there a motion? Motion by Milton. Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, let me, let me make this note. I should have done this earlier. Ed is not here today. Ed's mom is in the hospital. It's drugs, pretty serious. But Nathan is here. If, if any questions.
Yes, thank you very much, Chancellor. Nathan Terrell is here to answer any questions, uh, if anyone, if any of the board members have that. I think most everybody has, uh, inquired as needed and been responded to on this particular issue. Seeing no further discussion, we'll call the question. We'll have a roll call vote on the replacement of HVAC system at Naylor Hall Gaston State Community College.
Ms. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, A3, the replacement of the cooling tower for building at Shelton State Community College. Is there a motion? Motion, motion by Mr. Davis, a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion?
Question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Nathan, can you tell us why the design fees, construction contracts, and total project cost are all this late? They're hard numbers.
Those are, just to clarify, I thought your mic's not working. Those are the bid numbers and not estimates. Great question, Mr. Smith. And thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Terrell. Any other question? Placement at Shelton State Community College. Seeing no further discussion, we'll call the question, uh, roll call vote for replacement of cooling tower at Shelton State Community College.
Ms. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McInnes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, A4 is refunding for, uh, bond series 2005 and 2012 at, uh, Central Alabama Community College. Is there anyone that wants to present on this first?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say on behalf of the
Yes, sir.
There are several of these that are, that will come before the next several out of refunding, uh, very expensive series. The market is, uh, said it was going to move and in an effort to, uh, capture the best opportunity for refunding. This is, it's kind of for the board. There'll be several coming for the board. We, the committee has met with, uh, members of the chancellor's staff, also, uh, with the folks at Stiefel, Mike Dunn and his team. And we've had a few hours going over these and have thoroughly vetted them. We're very confident in, uh, this being what we need to do. There are a lot of documents under this, U.S. trustees, they have an interest on paper for all of these. And it's normal for this process, we, by these resolutions authorize these processes. And as the market hits the right moment, they're then executed and all the paperwork are completed. Obviously, they can't be completed until the law is resolved. So, uh, we recommend that. Should go through each of these, I'm just wondering if the people are all in favor, 100%. It represents a significant savings of several million dollars through all of these refunding processes.
Very good. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion on this particular item on Central Alabama. Mr. McInnes, is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Ms. Boyd. Any further discussion or questions on this particular item from the board?
I'd just like to commend, uh, Ms. Calhoun and Mr. Helms for their diligence. They're constantly looking for opportunities for savings, and this is substantial. So again, I'd like to commend you on that.
Okay. We also have present Mike Dunn and Gary Ream with Stiefel. And, uh,
I believe they're prepared to answering questions.
Yes, yes, I've pointed that out. If, if the board has any, uh, any questions for them or if there's anything that they'd like to add to what Mr. McInnes said.
I think he summarized it well. So we're available for questions, puts a favorable market and take advantage of lower interest rates and save some dollars for these colleges as we have done in the past. We had a very successful refunding program in 2020 for several colleges in a similar fashion.
I assume the timeline for these is, as soon as possible, um, on each one of them?
Gary, why don't you address the timing on the individual colleges? You're muted, Gary.
Sorry, everyone. Um, for Central and Lurleen B. Wallace, uh, the timing is indeed, as you said, as soon as possible. Northeast would be right behind that. Wallace Hansville soon after that. The dates for settlement of these would be sometime between a month from now, um, through August 1st, as we detailed with the Finance Committee in our discussion Mr. McInnes referenced. So yes, in general, this would be on a fast track.
Thank you.
I feel that to the president of the office of all colleagues, it's obviously prepared with the documents.
Mr. Boat with hand there and dial. Do you have anything to add?
No, sir. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'll just say that those resolutions look very similar to the ones you considered and approved in 2020 for that refunding program. We're taking the same format and approach.
Any other, uh, questions for our experts that are, that are present? Thank y'all for being here. Thank you for, uh, going through this. Thank you for the work of the Finance Committee, Mr. McInnes, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Mitchell. Appreciate your work. At this time, I'll call the question and you'll go down the road on this, uh, item refunding, uh, for authorized resolution for bond series 2005 and bond series 2012 for Central Alabama Community College. Ms. Hibble. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McInnes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, A5, refunding authorized resolution for bond series 0513 foundation, 2013 USDA lease for Lurleen B. Wallace Community College. Is there a motion?
Some.
A motion by Mr. Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Seeing, uh, you call the rows, Ms. Hibble. Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McInnes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, A6, uh, refunding authorized resolution for bond series 2012 at Northeast Alabama Community College. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Boyd. Any discussion? Seeing, uh, we will call the question, uh, and call the row on the motion to refund, uh, refunding for authorized resolution bond series 2012 for Northeast Alabama Community College. Ms. Hibble.
Ms. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Matthew Wood.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, A7, the refunding authorized resolution for bond series 2012 for Southern Union State Community College. Is there a motion? Motion. Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Ms. Boyd. Any discussion? Seeing them, we'll call the question and please call the row, Ms. Hibble.
Ms. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McInnes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, A8, refunding for authorized resolution bond series 2012 for Wallace State Community College. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Seeing now, we'll call the question and call the row for the refunding for authorized resolution bond series 2012 for Wallace State Community College. Ms. Hibble.
Ms. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McInnes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Section eight, executive legal and public information. Eight, A1 is, uh, admission statement for Central Alabama Community College. This was on last month's work session. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Boyd. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Call the row, please, Ms. Hibble. Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McInnes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight, A2, review and approval of admission statement for Gaston State Community College. Once again, this was on last month's work session. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Now we'll move to a roll call vote.
Ms. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McInnes.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Item eight, A3 is review, view and approval of admission state Northwest Show's Community College. Is there a motion?
Some.
A Mr., who's that? Ms. Wood, Ms. Brown, and second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? Seeing now, we'll move to roll call vote.
Ms. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McInnes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight, A4 is the first of four policy changes on the agenda under section eight. All of these were on last month's work session. All of these have been thoroughly vetted by the Policy Committee. And the board has had an opportunity to ask questions and get responses and give input on this. As Chair of the Policy Committee, Ms. Brown, do you have anything to?
Just like to thank, uh, Ms. Calhoun and, uh, Mr. O'Brien for working with the Policy Committee on these. Just a real nice effort to streamline some things and, and get some things in order, so. Have any questions? I see Mr. O'Brien is here and.
Well, thank for your, thank you for your leadership on the Policy Committee and for the work of everyone on the Policy Committee. You as Chair, Matt Woods, and Susan Boyd serving on that committee. Thank you all. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on eight, A4, uh, recommendation regarding adoption of revised policy 302.01 insurance fidelity box. Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Seeing now, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Hibble.
Ms. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yeah.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McInnes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight, A5 is a recommendation regarding adoption of revised policy 304.01 financial reporting. Is there a motion?
Some.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing now, we will move to a vote on the recommendation regarding adoption of revised policy 304.01 financial reporting. Please call the row, Ms. Hibble.
Ms. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McInnes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight, A6, recommendation regarding adoption or revised policy 308.01 cash and investment management. Is there a motion? Motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second? Second by Mr. McInnes. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion or questions, we'll move to a roll call vote for the recommendation regarding adoption or revised policy 308.01 cash and investment management. Please call the row, Ms. Hibble.
Ms. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McInnes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight, A7. Item 8A7, recommendation regarding adoption of proposed policy 320.01 auxiliary services. Is there a motion? Motion by Milton. Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? Seeing now we'll call the question on the recommendation regarding adoption of proposed policy 320.01 auxiliary services. Please call the roll, Ms. Hibler. Yes.
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 Motion carries. Item 8A8 is self-evaluation resolution by the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees. This item has been in the works with the Board and through council for quite some time. It was a two-year report to Saks COC. Mr. Bates, would you like to add anything to this? Thank you for your work. Thank you, Mr. Bates, our council with hand, errand, doll. Thank you for your work in getting this put together and there were others involved too. Linda Coligross, just want to make sure everybody gets, because there's a lot of good work that went into this and Board members, thank you for, I know most every Board member had input and on this and we appreciate that work. At this time, I will entertain a motion on the self-evaluation resolution. Motion by Milton. It's been a motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a roll call vote, Ms. Hibler. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Motion carries. This personnel is next on the agenda. I recognize Chancellor Baker.
Nikita, do you want to come around to the? As you know, we've hosted and gone through a search and interview process for Lawson Community College. And we have the results and today I want to make a recommendation that that position they feel permanently by what I think is probably one of the most experienced people in this system and a tremendous asset of this system. And I'm excited about what this person can do as the new permanent president of Lawson Community College. So, Dr. Anthony, we want to offer you the position of permanent president at Lawson Community College, knowing full well that that school will be well-served, the system will be well-served. And I'm going to put one condition. I want you to pass your phone number to the gentleman sitting next to you. So with that, Nikita. Mr. Chairman, this Cynthia Anthony is, she's one of those people that you want to meet every day because she's always positive, she's always cheering people up, and she's always after the business of pursuing education and making it better. So I'd like to recommend forward that she be the permanent president of Lawson.
We have a recommendation from Chancellor Baker to make Dr. Cynthia Anthony the permanent president at Lawson State Community College. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
There's a motion for Mr. Davis, there's a second for Mr. Smith. Let the record show. Is there any discussion? Seeing now we'll call the question and please call the roll, Ms. Hibler. Yes.
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 Dr. Cynthia Anthony is unanimously approved by the recommendation of Chancellor Baker as the permanent president of Lawson State Community College.
Chairman Thompson, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Baker, first let me say good morning to you and it is great to see you all over the Black City behind the Capitol. Thank you. Thank you so much for your affirmation and the kind words you've just heard. I am extremely touched and inspired by your expressions of confidence and the support that you have always provided to me. I am humbled and honored to serve as the next president of Lawson State Community College. Lawson State has a rich, rich, rich history of strong leadership and outstanding accomplishments. So I certainly not take this appointment lightly. I clearly understand the challenge before me, I understand the charge before me, and I do readily accept that challenge. We have a solid foundation on which to build and I believe that Lawson State's future is even brighter than its past. I'm excited to be a part of that future and I look forward to leading Lawson State Community College to even greater heights. We will embrace the opportunities and we'll face the challenges head-on as we engage our community, strengthen our workforce, and remain laser-focused on the student experience. Thank you again for your vote of confidence and your support as we embark upon the next chapter in the Lawson State story. We are indeed Cooper Strong.
Mr. Chairman, we have also received applicants from candidates and searched those. We've gone through a process and gone through the interviews, of which two of you participated in. And as of today, I have made the decision that I will recommend Brad Newman as the new permanent president, longtime president will be for the community college in Tuscaloosa at Shelton Community College. My expectation is that this will bring long-term service, stable leadership, and great things to happen and move forward as we move forward with working with that community, which is a great community, but there's a lot of needs that have not been met. And as we move forward, I've decided that this is a gentleman along with Cynthia Anthony's telephone number will be successful at that center. So I would recommend Brad Newman.
Mr. Bradley Newman has served in the public and private sector in a career that has made his 28 years. For the past 10 years, he has served at the plant now before the state of Texas and the state of Tennessee and so forth. Mr. Newman's many years of leadership and management experience have given him tremendous insights to work on development and the need for skilled employees to support local businesses. Mr. Newman is a recognized leader in the local community, serving as chairman of West Alabama Works, vice chair of education and workforce development for the West Alabama Chamber of Commerce, and a member of the West Alabama Regional Workforce Council's workforce innovation and opportunity task. Mr. Newman has a passion for improving lives in the U.S. He's actively engaged in developing young leaders, colleagues, a statewide effort to improve the process of literacy and training through years since time to the present ministry and establish the all-track process for children to be used in other service. Mr. Newman earned a bachelor and master's degree in industrial engineering at the University of Alabama.
We have a recommendation from Chancellor Baker for Brad Newman to be the permanent president at Shelton State Community College. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? Seeing now we'll move.
Yes. I had the pleasure of actually being on the interview committee and Mr. Newman's leadership is exemplary and his passion and commitment to the city of Tuscaloosa and West Alabama is impeccable. So again, very good candidate.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Woods. Anyone else? When they move to a roll call vote? Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
We welcome now President Brad Newman of Shelton State Community College.
Have been fortunate to make groups here's now, so it's the first time in my career that I've had the opportunity to really dig into the community and the way that I've served up. Had to give itself opportunities to do that, but none like this. All of those opportunities led to significant successes. Successes done like this and led perfectly to this opportunity. No people already in the area that understand the needs of the area in the way that doesn't just reach one or two parts of the community, but all of the community. And to be able to also serve all of those areas and passing through. So I truly appreciate the first one. Surely take this responsibility and consider to do what's best for folks in the community. Really appreciate this opportunity. Very much so. I appreciate you all offering to forgive that people by the street. Thank you very much and I appreciate it.
Are there any committee reports? Chancellor's report.
Mr. Chairman, I've asked Olivier Charles if he will give us a update on things that we are doing to deal with improving our overall recruit recruiting of students, which is an item that needed the attention and Olivier and his staff is moving forward with some programs. I'm going to jump ahead and ask Keith if he will, we plan to do this later, but after Olivier, if you give me a report on rapid response training centers. And then Vicki, a short report on the Spire, okay?
Thank you, Chancellor Baker. Members of the Board, Chairman Thompson, Vice Chairman Davis, and Mr. Boyd, thank you for giving me just a few minutes of your time. Chancellor made it very clear yesterday I have five minutes of your time to tell you just a little bit about what we're doing in terms of purchasing the customer relationship management software or CRM to help our students. I will say that I don't think anything I say will be as exciting or as excited as I am for Lawson State and Shelton State, so I'm very happy for Dr. Anthony and also Mr. Smith. So one of the things I will say before we start is, if you all remember, we gave you an update back in November about where we were with this process. So today is more so just a refreshment, but also just a quick update as to some of the progress that we've made with this software. All right. So for those that don't know, just to tell you a little bit about what a CRM is, I chose a graphic to tell you this rather than words, but essentially what this will be is a software that will help our colleges track the life cycle of the student. So whether it's ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, or even younger than that, or somebody in the workforce or anywhere, we can take that student at the phase of discovery, which is at the top, and work them clockwise through our process and through our funnel. So our goal is to engage a student through the point of the prospect all the way to the time they enroll and essentially make that student graduate and then continue to talk to that student once they become a long time. So that is essentially the goal of this system is to make sure we improve our communication and more so our engagement with our prospective students to be comfortable. So we hope we contribute all access to our campus. Next slide, please. So in short, what can a system like this do? And I could probably give you a two-hour presentation as to what a CRM can do, but there are some things in particular that a system are looking for to make our colleges efficient, to make the lives of our people a lot better, but also to enhance how we communicate with our students. So on the end of recruitment and admissions, we want to essentially have some web chats and management capabilities. We are very interested in online application. And what I mean by that is we currently have an online application, but we want to move the application to the front base in CRM and not get into the detail. What that will allow us to do is to help some of these complete applications in a lot faster rate. So that's going to be a big thing for us, territory management for recruiters and also partner relationships as well. So what I mean by that is a college's relationship with a local high school or a local entity that supports people. So think about this system in terms of communicating not just with people, but also with entities as well. We track a lot of different communications in that regard. Once a student enrolls within our colleges, we want to improve retention. And that's one of the gains I think of a system like this, is it allows advisors to communicate with students one-on-one. A lot of our colleges are doing these things, but they're using four, five, or six different software to accomplish these goals. You want a college that will want to, that will allow a recruiter to talk to a student and then hand them off to an advisor and continue the conversation. And then once they graduate, continue their conversation on the outside. And then once they graduate, continue their conversation on the outside, on the outside. So appointment schedule, you know, for students to schedule their classes for next semester. Or if an advisor noticed that a student wasn't doing as well in their class right now, an advisor could reach out to that student. Be it direct email or text message, all through one system and the system will track the communication. So we would know the behaviors of our customers. We would know what our students respond better to, you know, whether they're going to text or email or call. It just makes our colleges and our advisors and our people that help us to be direct, give us quicker and more direct access to the students. So and item three, it just, I think, sums it all up as to what our colleges will be able to do. Right now, some of our colleges have contracts or constant contact and mail gyms and text companies, and all those companies do amazing jobs. But one of the things we want to do is use the system to track everything again that we do. So email, unlimited email, unlimited one, one message, unlimited text message. We think we can save our colleges a lot of money, a lot of the individual contracts that they have. But again, this helps us be even smarter in terms of power streams and our access. Now we know, or we will know, the tools that they respond. So next slide, please. These tools are not new per se to the business world. I know a lot of you are familiar with a lot of these tools from experiences. But you know, about five or six years ago, the educational world started diving into CRM. Colleges and systems that have really involved themselves and embedded themselves with systems have seen a lot of success. You know, ultimately, why do we want to go to a CRM or cloud CRM? I should put that as a slide title, because a lot of our colleges have CRMs. Our colleges are doing a great job with this. But I think us taking the system approach, we help all of our colleges. One of the things that the Chancellor said a lot that I always remember is he wants to level the planet. And then what he means by that is he wants to, you know, reach states that have the same access technologies that either college or just that has. So I think our office can help our colleges do that with systems. So we can help with efficiency with a system like this. We can help our colleges improve their communication with their students and also their business entities. One of the things that I certainly want us to tackle is to increase the number of completed applications. We have processes for admission. Last year, we had two thousand or so applications that we need to complete. In a system like this, we can actually talk to the student that started the application, that didn't complete the application, send an email and say, hey, John. We noticed that you started this application. You're eighty-five percent complete. The other fifteen percent will only take you six minutes. So we can actually give that granular with our messages to our students. So we're excited about all those kinds of things. Ultimately, we want to increase retention. You know, I did put it in here and I was very intentional to not put that. A system like this, if we use correctly, can improve the number of new students that our colleges get. But the strong focus is not the retention aspect as well. We're not keeping the students that we have that do not get as effective. We can't grow them, to be honest. So increasing student retention by increasing contacts with advisors and other people on campuses and other people on this. Tracking interactions with business entities is important piece. And I think one of the most amazing things that a CRM can do for the entire system, but individually for our colleges as well, is that we can use analytics to make business decisions a lot more detailed. So what I mean by that is we can know where to invest. So for example, if a college is enrolling fifty percent of the students that apply for admissions, that's a good thing. What we need to help that college do if they want to grow is get more application. But if college is getting twenty percent of the students that enroll that apply, they don't have an application problem, they have a circulation problem. So we need to ramp up that communication. So we can now know where to invest and where our colleges can improve. Our colleges can know where they can, and also we'll learn how in weeks we can pay with our students. You know, be surprised that seventeen and eighteen will respond better to text messages, but we still have students that respond better to letter and email and postcards. So now our colleges can save money because they can know which population responds to type of text message is free, but postcards aren't. So they can make those kinds of decisions and become a lot smarter and a lot stronger in terms of power and triggulation. So we're excited about what this tool can do and ultimately how it can help our colleges. I'll only have one more slide. Next slide. Where are we now? And I think this is the most important slide because when we talked in November, we were just getting started with this process. We feel very good about where we are now with this process. It's been a team effort. It's been our office along with Ben Rose Rock and Jack Becker and IT and Matt Ote and also our legal team that's been helping us this far. I will say this, I have put this in this slide. I will tell you all that I am happy that David O'Brien brought the base on our team. From from the legal perspective, it has been amazing to have their insight and they have come through their contract. Figured out every big word that we had to use a SARS or dictionary for, and they have been amazing in these negotiations. So if I ever get in trouble, whichever one of you will do pro bono work, I'll hire you. So they have really been been game changers for us in this process. So we're hopeful that we're at a point where I think it's something to Chancellor very soon for his decisions to start implementation. We want to have something in place for our college by the song so that they can start. So the next few months are critical for us. We have about six implementation scenarios that we're playing with right now. Colleges depends on when we sign and how we go about, but every single plan has the result of our colleges being all fours with the system ready to go this fall, and they'll be able to track students a lot better. Again, I say this is a team effort between our office and IT and this team that's posted a CRM administrator position. Hopefully, we can fill that position with a good candidate that will work out of this office, walk this building, or the defense office that helps support our schools and our people that need help. So we'll be there along the way through implementation. We'll be there along the way to help the students and our colleges how to work this. They'll allow us to, and we certainly want to help them be successful. And I will close with a story that is in the lab, a lot of the slide. And this is ultimately our goal. And I love the story of the three Patens. And it's three Patens. They're all named Caitlin. They're all spelled differently because they're three different girls. And one of the reasons we love this story is because Caitlin on the left is your high school student, valedictorian, you know, thirty-eight CT, SGA president. She wants to go to law school. Caitlin in the middle, you have to use your imagination a little bit, but she's a simple mom. She's got two kids at home. She's got a full time job and she's looking up still. And the Caitlin on the right, Caitlyn, is your social butterfly. She is a student that wants to be in every single club. She wants to just pay and everything on campus. The point is that all three of these students belong in our community college. But because they all have different interests, there's no way they all are going to respond to the same type of message, the same type of message. So a CRM allows our colleges to tailor messages individually to each of them based on what they like, but to the same college. And that's important because a lot of times in our business, we send a postcard or a email to everybody and we expect everybody to respond to it, right? But our students don't. And I think a system like this allows our colleges to be smarter and allows us to be more efficient in the way that we reach our students because we want to make colleges relevant to wherever they are. We want to reach our students wherever they are. So I want to leave you with that, but that's ultimately the way to think about this tool is it allows us to talk to every single student. Matter of their background, share the message that makes sense to them, but about the same situation. So with that, I want to thank you. And I have one last slide. I keep saying one slide. But I want to thank you for this opportunity, but also I want you to know that we're diligent in this process. We're excited about it. Our IT team is excited. Our colleges are excited. In almost every Aspire plan that we read, students assess and colleges reference how excited they are about this technology. So we're very thrilled about it. Yeah, I want to thank you all for the songs.
Chancellor, I need to take questions. If there are questions, yeah.
I was just gonna make a comment. So I've been using CRMs for twenty years and I'm excited to see that the system is going to implement this tool. It's a great tool for repository for information. And I'm extremely excited about the retention piece because that's where we really need to focus. And to see that you're going to have that retention scorecard, you're going to make sure that students are engaged is very encouraging. So again.
I'll buy a comment also that the user of CRM is just a long time. Very important. Good steps with CRM. You keep very, very good notes, personalized notes for their students to assess. They get step three. There's personal notes in there about students and their activities.
Excellent presentation. Thank you.
I will say that our colleges drove this process. That's just, that's just been amazing. She has committed a lot of people to our colleges and they have been amazing. So thank you all again.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good to see everyone face to face. But it's a team that I've had with the graduation. Chancellor, that's all. Yeah, kind of discussed this today. I'm going to apologize to, I don't have a problem with that. So I was prepared for probably more than I can put on together, or practically the most popular, I think, Republican field. Chancellor asked me to talk a little bit to you about the people that I can train with. During the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, I knew the county where I knew the college system, served one hundred eighty-nine thousand Alabama's owners. About forty-nine thousand individuals from all partners or all schools who was in basic schools or us giving for both. Our community colleges and colleges have served hundreds of companies with non-credit training programs and job payment skills. There's more work we've done that potentially industry needs the workforce to balance. Even the least half of the numbers being served by the community college system with a mayor for short term, customized non-credit training. The business industry continues to exceed the state's current training capacity. So let's talk a little bit about Pan Semple, original RAP training center that's focused on workforce training, a short term of non-credit. As you're aware, the government has five hundred thousand attainment workshops for the state. That goal was established free COVID nineteen. So during the COVID nineteen or prior COVID nineteen, we were experiencing a rapid low unemployment for rent and tax office. Fast forward to today and in all the circumstances and statistics have changed, the critical need for RAP workforce training is the same if not greater. During December of twenty twenty, the Alabama Department of Labor stayed with the hundred and forty-one thousand Alabama state one hundred and seventy-seven. Six hundred was given to five hundred thirty-four individuals, two hundred and four. Immediately exposed for displaced workers with the pandemic, but they need retraining to find more even more jobs at the transition in the more resilient industry sector. And there are still more jobs we met and filled in Alabama back in forty-four, twenty twenty, search of the job posters of two hundred twenty thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine deep job postings in the state where either no educational requirement is listed or where the educational requirement that was listed was a high school or a nonprofit. According to APOL's current ten year educational training act, over out of eight thousand three hundred thirty-three, excuse me, eight hundred thirty-three thousand four hundred seven jobs. Sixty-seven percent of rejected jobs in twenty twenty-four require only a high school or a nonprofit. Sixty-eight percent of those jobs will require short term or moderate term training with short term or longer. With one more for next, moderate term or five events in twenty-one. My greatest example will be this happening in Mobile, Oklahoma, there in Mobile and all the Gulf Coast. In the next twelve days, you know, I said you could hire almost two thousand, I think a hundred and one to two thousand of agents. Position that had a role to have, but it's not a high school or a nonprofit. Sadly, for that position, there's thirty-four thousand applicants. The opportunities for good paying jobs for individuals with high school or nonprofits to really create that, they really exist. Now, I'm grateful to provide these individuals with skills, certifications, the potential they need to succeed. There's an article that was published yesterday, so it was our last time. It's a part of publication. Information was paid in one of the, part of the presentation that says we're a high school and that is still here. They track two thousand faculty high school graduates. One of the highest rooms in high school, which were eighty percent, ninety percent. They track fifty thousand fifty thousand eight hundred four high school graduates that year. Forty-two percent of those high school graduates did not enroll in secondary education. So we're talking about these, we told Apple training center, that's the population that's really not being processed wrong in the state. Speaking of percent of those students dealing with into junior or fourth year. So some good information that was out last night that people can't believe what I'm saying. So I'll go back and say the regional RAP training center, you know, the AC system that serves the population of the state. If you have a population that exists that's not well served, these centers will do that. So it's, let's talk a little bit about those training centers. One of the training, the one that looked like that regional RAP training center, obviously these are grad students that's in the title. Uh, but flexible delivery, you can share training, boot camps, workshops, not weekly offerings. We need to think that hours, days, and weeks, not actually weeks. Training that is designed for customized, the liquid, for the local business and industry. We want, we use the same script, but the source will withstand all the top products. A giving example of sorcery training in the state of Placenta, like I was just saying, you seem to put that off right. Just a quarter of the number does have construction, the number of contractors, partners, the number of customized, non-credit people that operate the company. The training is headed by industry. College hired an industry expert as an instructor. It was grant driven, so starting a lot of times, I started a program that is athlete grant driven, funded for the instructors and the materials. The college group and industry, the people who are customized, the training, the program that's almost three hundred hours of instruction to a twelve week program. Two nights a week, three hours a night, and every student has to commit it. It takes two, a Saturday and Sunday for eight hours to sit down and have a physical appointment for the work department. So the students that are going to the program have a job offering, a partnership. Needing salaries, those jobs, thirty-eight thousand eight hundred four dollars for highly experienced individuals, training for sixty thousand. Does not require a high school or a nonprofit, but can be obtained with the successful employment of a non-credit training program. I talked to President Brown about the program. He's willing to share the program. In fact, he said, he, in his words, just saying, it would be foolish if you had just taken provided this training and scale it against that by people. One of the members of industry who partnered with just saying, this is Chris Street, the University of Bill. Talked Chris about this and he was in the midst of all those conversations for well over a year, putting this particular training together. I asked Chris about the certificates that these individuals were going to receive. Chris said the training is exactly what they're hoping. It's non-credit because basically what the first two weeks of a job looks like for us. That certificate of completion, the present, the ground signature is perfectly fine. It meets the need for what we have from those individuals in this training. Chris went on to say, a lot of these individuals who are now receiving the certificates, those certificates need to work. His words were, even if they are just certificates of completion, the college press, the signature on them, they relate and level with the college for those individuals. It means a census of acceptance, and if they can, and if they go on. The need is the only recognition they personally perceive since high school. We talked about the one offs. We talked to both the Alabama FIB about boot camp training for some of our local organizations and members. You know, when you beg about boot camp training with a big grocery store, you think that's not a high demand. And the demand for that will likely be lower, but it's still a training need and it's not being met. It's a program of work to the head of FIB and FIB members and a support to the individuals who are toward or potentially toward the national parks. So these friends are at training centers that provide them training. Small in scale, but a great importance of commercial need others. A training can occur at the training center on site that ideally will be at over, but will not have a full in upscale or with the training center, because you may develop, you can equip the training, you have one part of state, six plus, and then it's another part of state. So the idea is to not invest heavily in a reward, in a progress, put dollars in the programs and sort of experience in this institution. I want to go back to the industry data of the Uh, I want to go back to the industry data of the. We're talking about, it's not having those two thousand producers. Uh, when you look at that, that company has developed for its end units in the college. Uh, as well as working with the college instructors for training, training programs. Uh, that provide the training equipment, the need for the distance, and it provided the models for wiring, the key for the decent individuals. To classify as helpers. Uh, using the traditional four-credit model, the N C C R, you know, you detect the college, almost all leaders, which is the number of individuals. That this company needs to have, and rather than having time. We're here, their base educational part of it is high school and law, if that's preferred, then they would hire without that. So fortunately, our college there has worked, uh, didn't sort of figure out a solution, how to solve that. And they've come up with ninety-six hours of non-credit training to prepare those individuals for a call. And so they either rely on some of the organization to meet the demand, because it's completely higher than usual, it's pretty much a little organization. Rather than delivering ninety-six hours of non-credit training versus fifteen, we have to semester. Uh, flexible delivery schedules, multiple pair of horses, fifteen or twenty students, day, evenings, nights and weekends. Sound familiar? That's all that we train the center to look at. Now this, those presented, we probably for our colleagues, they're, most of our colleagues are prepared for new flex, two hundred, excuse me, two thousand individuals. Trained that are presented to them here. So the rapid training centers would be an asset for those scholars who are in this place, come along. In closing, I guess we'll talk a little bit about, through the regional rapid training centers, serve also the rest of the industry. And kind of work is already important to the need in high school. Dislocated workers who have lost a job or need unemployment. Unemployed citizens who live in high school and need instant employment. Without too, serve the population that state doesn't serve very well in all the places that serve. This will be clear, our community college system, are provided with training, their offerings are determined by able funding. The capacity, the attention, the relative to the instructions, instructors, facilities and equipment. The, I say, probably one of those guys called corporate training. Production credit. Uh, so often, not good training is a separate focus. While breaks are sometimes available, as soon as the start of the course, it's hard, those circumstances are rare, it's not that. Maybe obviously, we don't ask, well, all that location, so location, 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 ideas, I said, are not really important. But the blue gap, realizing existing college campuses, existing industries, or empty-ized buildings, abandoned storefronts. Rule areas that are often of a sort, locations close to campus, tech centers, or near local career centers. Uh, again, as I mentioned, I want to point out some of the recent non-credit uh, training programs that have been established in the state. So that you can kind of understand what a salary has with this. Let's talk about the land program, partnership with our, our private coworkers. Median salary, this is interesting data, median salary is fifty-one thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars. Uh, and I'm ready to utilize this certification program for each level acting network, troubleshooting. Median salary is eighty-seven thousand five hundred and five. Uh, as you're all aware, the college is offered, I'm glad a short-term certificate is available. The median salary, very, very nine thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars. Uh, in closing, we don't, now more than ever, child-sipping Alabama, they're well-paying, all your, a superior non-credit training. That often comes with some of those child's education and relationships. And we believe that we create all that training service for our partners, for citizens, given the best positions that we're all set for, this is the industry field. Where they need positions, jobs. Any questions?
I applaud you for this, this is much needed. Uh, come questions came with that, rightfully so. All of our colleges are, their mind, or sex or. So how do you get around that? You are running different sites and locations. From that process, if that process is necessary.
So these trainers will focus on non-credit training. So sax, brutal sax accreditation, we do not have to worry. Stash, performance, non-credit training, certifications, and regulations. Now, one thing that we look at is, we're going to train the house of this, that we're living effectively, blessing for colleges. We really want the colleges to send the training that we're going to provide, people to be getting credit for. These individuals will be able to take the benefits of the current, and gain credit for product assessments, so they can make their transition into a season. For the short-term certificate, if that's needed, this is why. It's a win-win opportunity for the state college. They're really preparing for careers, but also for next business, industry, and individual. But given the individual odds, perhaps success, and seeing how the people that continue that education pathway, a year after. The house that became a vision of convention, so they would make every graduation, to the degree that they stack, for the power of the short-term certificate. Or long-term certificate, however they have to be, they actually use that one, non-credit training is a spark. If we need to go.
Again, this, this is a great concept. Oh, how do we get the word out? Uh, example in the past, um, company needed P O C program. Uh, brought two, two years in, blew their mind to it, and then a four-year school jumped in and did. Uh, word of mouth, getting people oriented to this. Uh, companies starting up right now, needed P O C program. Uh, they knew that I was involved in a lot, so they called me. But then I, I had to rally there was people to get it done, so. How do we get the word out, go with these industry startups existing, and get the word to them? That you have this rapid funding program?
Sure, I, I think that's a very fair question. That is for that different education, uh, state. And I promise you, some success will get others success, word of trial. Here we look at, I look at this population, these regional training centers, regional rapid training centers, and serve, and then what business and industry needs. Uh, you know, you, you can replicate that success quickly around the state, and they, you are very well aware of this, all of you come from industry. You communicate with your industry, aren't peers. That's one little success will go a long way, word of mouth is the best of all advertising that you can get.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say too, that I think we're fairing the ATM, and actually we have the industry to ATM. I think you can build off of that, certainly. Contact and getting to the people. Uh, I would say this, that I, I think the presentation in general is the same presentation that Chancellor gave. It's a very budgeted presentation across the street. And I had the opportunity for uh, Dr. Ocean and Dr. Feist to tailor that presentation to give to me. And just Brown and I, uh, together put it, uh, presented to the local courts, uh, last month. And several dozen people there, a lot of industry folks, and they were genuinely pleased with what they heard. Surprised, pleased, excited about it, I've got, got a lot of positive comments behind the concept. So I, I think, uh, I think I'll.
Excellent report, thank you.
Doctor Hope.
Good morning, Chancellor Baker and Chairman Thompson and trustees, I hope you all can hear me. I think we've been experiencing some problems with folks online with volume, so I'm going to lean into the microphone. Uh, so everybody can hear me. Glad to give you a report this morning, an update on the aspire initiative. You will recall that last summer, we embarked on a very significant initiative for the system called aspire. And this was in response to the issuance of, of about a hundred and twenty million dollars, I believe, in P S C A funding, a bond funding. And combined with some advancement and technology funds and some funds from the system office. Chancellor Baker saw this as an opportunity to really make an impact on our state. And um, he didn't take the easy way out. And just say, okay, we're going to distribute this funding based on, say, enrollment at the colleges. And we'll have a formula, and everybody will get X dollars depending on their unduplicated headcount. Um, that would have been the easy way to distribute this money, but he wanted to make a lasting impact on the state. He wanted to make funding decisions strategically and intentionally, and so. Um, we embarked on the aspire initiative, which would lead the colleges through intentional engagement with their communities. And a self-analysis of their operations, and examination of their needs. A consideration of what their audiences are, who they serve, how their needs are changing and evolving over time. And where those colleges need to be ten years from now, to be successful in serving their communities. And so over the last few months, uh, our colleges have formed committees. And invited external stakeholders to be part of those committees to examine. How the college currently operates and how they can improve things, and how this funding might help them move forward into the next decade. And so they have done that, and done it quite well. They have engaged with folks that they previously didn't engage with. And many college presidents have told me that this experience has been. One of the most significant undertakings that they have had on their campus. And it has dramatically changed their culture on their campus, and improved community relations dramatically. So we feel like this has been a, a very positive experience for our system and for individual colleges. And they are now embarking on phase two of that initiative. Phase one recently closed out with the completion of the self-analysis. And we had um, ten teams here at the system office that participated in reviewing those self-analyses. And provided uh, an evaluation on each college to the chancellor. The chancellor reviewed those and has issued feedback to the colleges. So all twenty-four colleges this past week received their feedback on the evaluation of their self-analysis. And they are using that feedback now to proceed into phase two. Which is the actual development of their funding proposals. So they will be looking at their projects that they need to move their college forward into the next ten years. They will be prioritizing those projects, and then they will be developing a written proposal. And submitting that proposal for consideration for funding. Those colleges are allowed to submit more than one proposal. And they are to rank those when they submit them, uh, in order of priority. And we will then form teams again here at the system office to review those and to possibly make recommendations to the chancellor. The exact nature of how we're going to do that hasn't been quite nailed down yet. But um, we will be looking at things like need, we will be looking at how the college has. Uh, demonstrated that need through data and research. Um, how they have documented the community's feedback on those uh, projects. And um, just a holistic view of the state in general about the needs of, of the state. And the system, how those projects can strengthen our state, our system and our local communities. And those are due on April fifteenth. And so by that time, we will uh, have formed some teams to start looking at those and making recommendations to you all. On funding for those projects. Um. I haven't heard a lot of uh, back from presidents on receiving their feedback on the analyses, but um. Let me say this, we were pretty strict on our evaluations on those. We had high standards, it was a scale of one to five. And for each section of their self-analysis, in order to score a five. They had to not only answer each question of that section completely and fully. They also had to demonstrate use of data and research, and they had to include ample feedback. From their stakeholders in the process. So they, they had to really reach a high bar to score a five. And so if uh, any presidents are on the call today, let me just encourage you uh, on your scores. I know a lot, a lot of people may be disappointed when they get their scores on those because they weren't. Uh, maybe uh, four point five or four point eight or something like that, because I know they put a lot of work into it. And they did excellent jobs, but we had set the bar very, very high for a score of five. And um, we wanted to give good feedback to the colleges to strengthen them for going into phase two. So that they would have some good information to use as they prepared their proposals for, for phase two. So they are, uh, our colleges right now are absorbing that feedback and working on putting their proposals together for funding. And those will be submitted by April fifteenth. Do you have any questions on the aspire initiative, or Chancellor Baker, would you like to add anything to my comments?
Contact with the presidents. Actually, Leela, I think you already have them all scheduled. But we are holding meetings with four presidents at a time, with all my senior level staffs, divisions represented. In a three-hour conversation with the presidents and talking about all of this. Following that, I'm meeting with each president individually to go through their discussions and thoughts about what their needs are. So we're following that up, and those are scheduled starting right away, aren't they? Okay, so uh, we, we, we're working this in an effort to try to. Become a little more methodical in the analysis of what we're really doing, and are we covering all the bases? And are we giving you all the support from here that we need to give you? And uh, and are we holding you responsible for performance? So I'm looking forward to having those discussions.
This is exciting. Uh, I, I know you said proposals due April fifteenth, and, and when do you think you'll be able to bring uh, some recommendations to the board? You're really excited about us moving forward with some of these projects.
Immediately after.
Immediately after.
Of course, they, they won't be due until after your next board meeting, shortly after your next board meeting is when they will all be due. Um, and it will take us a while to go through all twenty-four colleges, and each college may have multiple proposals. So. I would think that it would take us at least a month, but I'm, and that may be ambitious.
I'm going to remember mine.
I just, uh, I just want to add too, that um, I think that the legislature is very pleased with the uh, way that we're conducting this. That we're doing it in a very transparent manner. Um, and again, uh, the chancellor hasn't taken the easy way out with this. And I believe that it's a significant experience for our colleges and one that will strengthen each one of them and strengthen them to serve their communities better. It's been a privilege to be involved with.
Thank you, great report, thank you, Chancellor, anything else?
We will uh, convene for our work session shortly after our adjournment here. Uh, I, I imagine the board members would like a ten-minute break. And uh, there are no objections, uh, we, we will have that. Our next meeting will be April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at ten AM. And if situation continues, there's no significant changes, we will probably uh, uh, meet. The board will be in person again here, but we will just monitor everything and based on. What the board feels they should do, we will follow through on that. Uh, any comments from the board?
Chairman, I'd just like to thank the staff, first of all, it's good to see everybody in person, but I just want to thank the staff for all the extra attention that's been given to. To us being able to be here together, I know it took a lot of extra work, and so thank you all very much for that, so.
Well said, I agree, and I, we just get such great attention from uh, uh, and, and, and great work from David O'Brien and Donna Hibley. And Amanda Wilkins, uh, and everyone else that's involved, forgive me if I don't mention a name, I, I've messed up before on that, forgive me. It's not intentional, but thank you for your time and attention to this, and for all the chancellors. the chancellor's staff. Appreciate it. It's all great. Dr. Richardson, once again, welcome. We're so glad to have you with us and look forward to interacting and getting your input on key issues.
Thank you so much. Looking forward to working with all of you.
Dr. Richardson and I have worked together several times in the past.
Yes, we have.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you. All right, thank you.
That's great. This week, Monday, was International Women's Day. And my brief tenure on this board and with this system, I have just come to respect the great leadership and participation we have from all the women in the system, and especially the two that have served, that are serving on our board. Thank you for the work that you do. It just, I know the champs couldn't get his job done, and it's just outstanding, the great work of the women in our system, from the top administration all the way down to staff at the individual community colleges. Just thank you for everything. One other thing I want to mention, and I'm talking too much, but during this initiative and effort to vaccinate our nation, our state, from COVID-19, our nursing students have participated with healthcare institutions throughout our state to get this done. And I applaud them and applaud their directors. I applaud the presidents, but there's been just great participation. And of course, it's great experience for those receiving that associate nursing degree, but they've stepped up. I know in many of our schools, and had some great recognition for Coastal Community College on a national scale, and several other of our colleges have been ranked very highly with their nursing programs. Thank you for the great work that all the directors and presidents do with that, but it's really come home to be something very important with this vaccination effort, and I hope that will continue. Anybody else?
I would add too, our emergency medical services, we've provided emergency vehicles, ventilators. We've been in the middle of all of this, and our folks have really stepped up.
That's great, Chancellor. That's great. We've got a story to tell in just about every vocation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye. We stand.
Good morning, Chairman Thompson, members of the board. As we're over, we have a presentation. Thank you. I'd like to present Calhoun Community Colleges Harris Hall restroom renovation project for your consideration. Next slide. Next slide. The restroom at Harris Hall on Calhoun Community Colleges Decatur Campus are in need of renovation. Built in 1974, the restrooms are not ADA compliant, and the fixtures and finishes are in need of refurbishing. This project is included in Calhoun's facilities master plan. The project's scope includes a renovation of six restrooms, so only 1,050 square feet of renovated space. The work will include demolition of existing restrooms, maybe new walls to support ADA compliance, and installing updated fixtures, finishes, and partitions. The spaces will be ADA compliant once the work has been completed. Lathan Associates Architects is the architect on this project. Project is scheduled to bid on March 18, 2021. Construction is estimated to begin second quarter of this year and complete by the third quarter of this year, within the third quarter of this year. And the project will be funded with Calhoun Community College local funds. Next slide. This slide is just showing the location of the Calhoun's campus right outside of Decatur. This slide shows Harris Hall is located central campus, and it's right behind the math science and administration building and the Chastain Student Services Center. These pictures are representative of all of the restrooms in Harris Hall. They're showing tired finishes and spaces that are not ADA compliant. Sinks and the mirrors and stalls are all not ADA compliant. The current budget is an estimated construction cost of $600,000 with a total project cost of $727,860. This budget is being presented with estimated costs with board's concurrence. The budget will be presented for approval in the April board meeting with the actual bid results. Next slide.
Question on the design fees. Understand construction costs in total, but aren't the design fees set of $60,000?
Yes, the design fees, the DCM, set the pay scales as baseline. And then there's also a 25% escalation allowed for major renovations. I'd be happy to bring other questions at this time. Thank you all very much.
Academic and student affairs. So we have, do we have Ms. Joy Jones?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, Jones. You have the floor.
Yeah, I do have a PowerPoint I think they were going to put up. Okay, that's not the first slide, though. Can you get to the beginning? Okay, you can go to the next slide. I'm Joy Jones. I am the dean of instruction at Shelton State, and Shelton State is proposing to start a medical laboratory technician program. And a medical laboratory technician is an integral part of the healthcare team with responsibilities that include processing and analyzing blood, body fluid, or other specimens in order to provide accurate and timely information to the ordering physician. And we have certainly seen the importance of medical lab technicians during this pandemic. So we feel like this is a very timely program that we're trying to start now. Do we still have the, is the PowerPoint still up? I don't see it. Well, I'll just go ahead without, with the PowerPoint. The program is going to seek accreditation by the National Accrediting Agency for Clinical Laboratory Sciences. This accreditation will allow program graduates to obtain national certification as a medical laboratory technician through the American Society for Clinical Pathology. And we do plan to have this accreditation prior to the first group of students graduating. Okay, next slide. The demand for an MLT program was determined through discussions with our local healthcare facilities and with our Alabama Workforce Development Council Area Three. The college also looked at the regional workforce data that was obtained from MC Occupation Overview along with data that we obtained from employer and student surveys. Next slide. Medical laboratory technician is included in Alabama's in-demand occupations list, and according to the MC Occupation Overview, in 2019, there were 2,000 technicians or technologists employed within 60 miles of Shelton State, and there were 5,000 employed in the state of Alabama. There's a forecasted need of an additional 80 MLTs within the next five years in Region Three and an additional 380 MLTs in the state. Next slide. The results of the employer survey that we administered indicated that 50% of the respondents currently have one to five vacancies for MLTs. 70% of the respondents said they would have one to two vacancies in the next five years, and 15% of the respondents would have 11 to 15 vacancies in the next five years. A student interest survey was administered to students enrolled in the college's Principles of Biology, Introduction to Inorganic Chemistry, General Chemistry, and Medical Terminology classes. 95% of those respondents agreed or strongly agreed that MLT graduates would be able to obtain employment in West Alabama. And 40% agreed or strongly agreed that they would attend an MLT program if one becomes available at Shelton State. Next slide. The college has obtained letters of support from six area healthcare facilities. These facilities have pledged support for the program through serving as clinical sites for students, serving on the advisory committee, providing adjunct instructors, and also hiring the program graduates. Next slide. The establishment of an MLT program at Shelton State would help fulfill a statewide need for medical laboratory technicians, as there are currently only four ACCS institutions that offer associate-degree MLT programs. The college also has strong partnerships with area healthcare facilities, and these facilities also serve as clinical sites for our other healthcare programs at the college. Next slide. The program will be located on the college's CA Fred campus, which is designated as an HBCU. So the program would be supported with Title III funds, along with tuition, institutional funds, and Perkins Funds. The college's current facilities are adequate to support the program's projected enrollment, so no renovations or additions are required at this time. I appreciate your consideration of this addition to the healthcare program offerings at Shelton State, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Dean Jones. There were fiscal item three, tuition rate and tuition revenue. Mr. Boat, is he still with us? Yes, I see.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Sir.
The background for this is that all of the colleges, as you are aware, have bonds, that have bonds outstanding, have pledged to secure those bonds, their tuition. In most cases, they also pledge, almost all cases, they also pledge some fees to secure the bonds. The proposal that was discussed or was done a couple of years ago to increase tuition by $10 results in those tuition dollars being pledged to secure the existing bonds of the system, of the systems to support the various colleges. So the only source, it's only the source of the funding that distinguishes one series of bonds from another, whether they're secured by the tuition and fees of, say, Southern Union versus Calhoun versus LBW. They're all issued by the state board. The proposal that you will hear more about in a few minutes from the Stiefel team is a proposal that would secure bonds that are issued on a more system-wide basis and secured by a special fee. The proposal is that that fee be basically a replacement for tuition. And in so doing, that would mean that for most of those fees, it would be a prior lien that would secure those bonds, and that's a better source of security than a lien that is also subject to claims to secure other bonds. This would not prevent the colleges from continuing to pledge their existing pledge revenues for other debt that they may choose to incur or choose to incur with the support of the board. But it would enable the system to support the colleges in a different way than is currently being done. So what I'm telling you is all background for what you will hear in a few minutes from the Stiefel team about how they propose to go about doing that. But it's important to understand that the separate fee is an important part of that structure because it separates it from the existing pledges. There are a few cases in which colleges' pledges cover all fees, and in that case, this pledge would be subordinate. But in most cases, the pledge would be prior and superior to any other claims against it and would therefore be valid security for those bonds. And I'm happy to answer any questions or to do so at the end of the presentation.
Chairman, I would just say the Auto Finance Committee has been through this in great detail over the last few weeks, and we think this is a good move. It really does change the cost for our students. We allocate these monies such that they can be used in a manner that just both describe. We're in support of this, and I think the presentation we'll hear next will help understand the next two of what this change could do for us.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Mr. Boat. Mr. Dunn, Mr. Rain?
Good morning. We're going to put up a PowerPoint for you. I'm not sure if you have that in your package or not, but glad to be here this morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and talk to you about a new financing vehicle for the board to consider, which ties into the fee discussion that Preston just mentioned. Am I going to the next page, please? Just a little bit of background. Next page. A little bit of background on how capital projects are currently funded for the colleges. Of course, you have cash flow from operations from the college. You have capital appropriations that come from the state, either on an annual basis or periodically through something like the Alabama Public School College Authority issue. And then you have college-level financings, which Preston mentioned, that are secured by tuition and certain fees at the college. And in those types of transactions, the tuition and not all fees, but certain fees become pledge revenues that we use to secure the individual bond issues. And while we issue bonds specifically on a college-by-college basis, the strength of the entire system plays a major role in the credit quality of the issues. You have each college being part of the system as a credit positive. You have the chancellor who has the ability and the authority and their responsibility to move dollars around the system if necessary. And then there are reserves throughout the system at the individual college levels, and there is a system reserve that's funded by a dollar an hour fee. And so all of these things together, the strength of the system, credit enhance the individual college deals. And because of that, the individual college deals are rated A1 by Moody's, which is a high investment grade rating, which otherwise wouldn't be available to the individual colleges. Next page, but... So... You might ask, well, why do we need a new credit facility? Well, all of the colleges throughout the system don't have the same ability to borrow money or to pay that money back. And as you're well aware, there's a variety of different quality and sufficiency amongst all the colleges. Some are in a better position to serve their local community than others. So while the funding sources... So while the funding sources that we currently have are good, there's a gap. So creating a new system credit vehicle would allow the board and the chancellor to better address the overall capital needs of the system. We certainly understand, particularly in the current COVID-19 environment, there's a concern about raising rates. We would submit to you that there is existing financial capacity within the system to initiate this new funding program that we're talking about. As Preston mentioned, there was a $10 an hour tuition increase that went into place in fall of 2018 that was split 50/50 between the system and the colleges. So using these funds can create a vehicle where the system can do a significant capital raise for the colleges. Next page, please. So in order to create a new financing vehicle, the best create that is to have a separately identifiable revenue source. And so what we're proposing is that you move the $10 that's currently in tuition into a special system-wide fee. Same $10 is just moving from tuition into a fee. Would not affect the split of the 50/50 between the colleges. And it's not a new charge for students. It's just coming in the form of a fee instead of tuition. If you look at the last couple of years, total credit hours throughout the whole system generally are between 1.7 and 1.8 billion hours per year. So if we conservatively assume 1.5 million hours, then a $10 fee would generate $15 million annually. These dollars would be used as pledge revenues, just like on the college deal, you use tuition revenues. We would use this fee revenue as pledge revenues for a system level. And note that, that these dollars, when I say to secure the bonds, the whole 15 million is not set aside to pay for the bonds. Out of the 15 million, seven and a half would be allocated to the system, and those would spend the dollars to repay the debt. And in order to establish a strong credit rating like you currently have, you wouldn't want to leverage those dollars up totally. You would want to have some coverage in there. So if we use five million of the seven and a half million, that provides what we refer to as a one and a half times coverage ratio. And if we're looking at the entire $10 fee, it's a three, three times coverage ratio, which is a good, strong credit quality to present to Moody's as a new financing vehicle. I just want to reiterate again that the $5 out of the fee that's currently going to the colleges would continue to go to the colleges. We're using it to credit enhance this, so to speak. But the intention would be for all of the debt to be repaid by the $5 that's allocable to the, to the system, not to the college. In order for this to happen and be a good credit vehicle, it would need to be a, a system-wide mandatory fee, and it would need to be a fee that's not subject to any discount. Next page, please. So this, this just kind of wraps it up. You know, for every dollar credit hour, we're estimating you generate a million and a half dollars. So for the $5, as we said before, that's seven and a half million dollars. And if we use five million of that seven and a half million dollars, we believe that that will create a strong credit. We think we will achieve a rating similar to what you currently have, if not the same. And if you take that size in today's market, on a 20-year deal, interest rates would be about 236. And if you leveraged up the entire five million, you could provide about $79 million in proceeds for projects. Likewise, on a 25-year deal, interest rates are a little bit higher. That 79 figure goes to 90 million, and on a 30-year deal, you're approximately $100 million. That's based on current interest rates in the market today, subject to market changes. But that just gives you some idea of the leverage that's available out there and the funds that you could raise under this kind of a, a program. You would, once you put this vehicle in place, you would have something that if, if credit hours were going down, you could increase the fee to offset that, but you've already built in a pretty substantial cushion. Credit hours could go down by a third before you would have to seek funding from anything but this fee. It would also give you a vehicle in the future. If you wanted to borrow, you could add to your borrowing capacity by adding to this fee. So that's, that's what we're talking about. It's at early stage. And I think there'll be a lot of discussions as we build this credit before it's presented to Moody's. We think this would be received very positively by Moody's. They, they'd like things being done with some overall system backing. And that certainly is the core reason your rating is as high as it is. So we think this would be well received by Moody's. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with you, and we're available at any time if you need.
I, I might add, this didn't originate with them initiating it. We've been talking about this for some year plus. This just seems to be the most logical way to go about some of the, dealing with some of the needs we have in the system. And so I've been asking Preston and Mike and his group to, let's look at what it would take to, to get in a position to do a system-wide issue. Because we do have a problem in the system. We have some of the easier environments to deal with and the larger schools with available revenue. And many of our smaller schools just are kind of stuck in a path. And I, I guess the most extreme example, and this is not a negative about anybody, but we look at Calhoun versus Drake. Not versus, but compared to Drake. Drake has so limited ability to change their environment that we've got to find some way to begin to move forward with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next item is approval of equipment purchase related to Alamat Project Wallace State Community College Chancellor.
Good afternoon, sir. We'd like to ask for approval for funds for Wallace State students. 600, the, the amount of $608,130 from special populations. And this, this, these funds would be going for the equipment for their expansion of their paint program there as their advanced manufacturing technician program. In addition to apprentices that would be utilizing equipment, other students and other career technical programs would also have advantage of using that equipment. This is a portion of their budget or the scaling impression grant, and it goes toward that our match, a season's commitment a match for the $12.1 billion DOL scale. The equipment that will be purchased with funds are, are listed in the action item. And this will be, there, there will be one more request that will be in the third year for, for Bishop State. And that, that will be basically the last obligation of funds that will be going toward the DOL scaling pressure grant from ACCS, but that will come in the third year, next year for Bishop State. And their equipment that will be expanding a new, basically give to a new program for payment that would be started there. Be glad to take any questions, Chair.
Anyone?
So the federal dollars are, have been spent, they've been issued, and, and you have actually, the, the board has actually approved those funds in the pre, last year. And so those, those funds have been committed and, and they've spent, started spending those dollars. And this is their second year budget that are, are going to be supported with state funds.
In each description, you have the S slash H and a dollar amount. Talk me memory. What is that in reference to? For each one of the descriptions, item descriptions?
The S slash H would be shipping handling.
Okay, thanks. That's including the total cost?
Yes.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does the board have anything else to come before us at this work session, Chancellor?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to just mention this because I'm excited about this. Several of you I know went down to Bishop at the groundbreaking of the beginning of the advanced manufacturing facility and the rehab of the facility for health sciences. The county commission has announced that it's supporting, we, we, the, the school ran a program about naming and offering opportunities for naming. The county commission has voted to donate, to contribute $350,000 to Bishop State to support the Advanced Manufacturing and Health Science Center. The city of Mobile has made a contribution, I believe it's 200, about $250,000 for the same purpose. And I say that because I think it's so important that the county governing body and the city of Mobile has made that kind of a commitment and vowed their support for Bishop to develop that kind of program. I think that's notable. It's kind of a change in approach.
Great news, Chancellor. Thank you for sharing that, Rose. Certainly is. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I had a, I had a page in the back. I don't know if you all have it in your work for 2021 Revenue Bonds Series. This, I'm, I'm not sure if this is. I think this will be some things that we will be seeing in the future.
They're giving you a heads up.
Yeah.
That, Mr. Bryan, that does complete our work session agenda. Just, just want to be clear. Very good. There's nothing else from the board of Chancellor? We stand adjourned. Thank you for everyone's participation.